Go ahead and get started and we've got Troy on to give us a chamber report.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished city council members. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right. Fantastic. All right. I'm going to share a screen. I have just a few slides to share with you tonight. Uh, it's all some really good news. Uh, it's been a very fun week at the chamber. Uh, got to play somewhat Santa Claus. Uh, because at our, uh, February sixth, uh, retreat, uh, this past week, the board, uh, decided on all the recipients of the funding it forward. Uh, program, uh, for 2025, and this is our program that offers financial support for events not organized by the chamber, funding projects that enhance, restore, or contribute to Leavenworth and the surrounding membership area. So, um, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars was set aside in this, uh, campaign this year. Um, and the recipients are, uh, Upper Valley Historic Society for funding for the new permanent Bavarian transformation exhibit and further restoration of Black Lockensfield. Uh, we are poised and budgeted to donate to the city of Leavenworth if approved, a new kiosk for the bathroom at Eighth and Commercial Streets. Uh, Icicle Valley Trot Unlimited, we will be supporting with a contribution towards Blackbird Island Pool Pond Restoration. Cascade Fisheries, um, is going to be kicking off a, um, capital campaign this spring for their salmon themed arc and, um, development. And so we have added to, uh, that. And then the Leavenworth Mountain Association, we're going to be assisting them with financial assistance. Uh, for human waste mitigation, which is a very fancy way of saying cortodons, um, at Trailheads this summer. Uh, and that, um, is some of the projects that we're supporting this, this year. Uh, and then for a organizational event sponsorship. Uh, Autumn Leaf Festival, Leavenworth Bike Fest, Cascade Athletic Boosters, Cascade Community Markets, Icicle Bicycle. Outports Firefighters, the Mountain Association, Mountain Film Festival, Soccer Club, Winter Sports Club, BAM Film Festival, Northwest Accordion Society, Wenatchee River Institute, Fresh Tread. And Waste Loops Earth Day. So that is the sum of all of the, um, pieces that we are able to contribute and assist with this year. Um, and we're putting this on a cyclical process that, uh, any members that are interested in receiving some money, uh, from the chamber, um, for one of our programs. The, the application process is going to be in the fall, October through the end of the year, uh, with the decisions being made in February. So we will actually be putting out a press release tomorrow. Uh, sharing all of this information, uh, about the funding it forward campaign. Um. And then I also wanted to share another investment that the, uh, chamber is making is at six forty-five Front Street. You see, uh, on the left is, uh, kind of a, uh, Google Earth. Uh, this was still when it was, uh, the, before Intro STEM. Um, and a current, uh, plan that is being put together by Syndicate Smith, uh, for that space, which would include having now a nice ADA ramp right up to a, uh, door to come in. Um, and the inside would feature a lot of, uh, natural wood and a lot of pieces that make it, um, I want people, we want people to think, is this a visitor center or a museum? Cause it's so darn cool. So that is, uh, uh, some of the investment that'll be happening. Um, uh, building permit should be in, if not on, uh, this week or next. And hopefully get rolling on this project to have a summer twenty twenty-five opening in the new location. And that's what I have to share with you tonight.
Ah, you have a question, Troy? In that, uh, sketch of the build out that I see horse harnesses on the wall there?
I know. Yeah. You did. And I know why you're asking.
Excellent.
I talked to you earlier today. Yeah. So, uh, but yes, there are some ideas, uh, is the take the space up high and put some really, uh, some vintage things. Uh, whether it's horse harness, if we're so lucky, um, bells, other, other, uh, artifacts, uh, from Bavaria.
Troy, what was the amount that you were gonna pay forward for those groups?
Um, all of those, put them all together, all those people I listed off breathlessly was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Awesome.
Yeah. And this, I just to make sure everyone is aware, this is not lodging tax money. This is, uh, proceeds from previous year's Oktoberfest, uh, amount that we were able to set aside. Um, so this is taking our event and finding very creative ways to give back. Um, and what was really, have you noticed there were some things like the, the Cascade Athletic Boosters and the Soccer Club? These were not, um, organizations we were able to help fund in the past because lodging tax money is, you know, whether, whether you're giving it out or I'm giving it out. It still has to follow the same RCW. So this, uh, having the revenue from Oktoberfest has sort of freed us up to do other things that don't necessarily fall in that lodging tax mold. So that's, uh, why we're able to expand sort of the giving.
Right. Yeah. Any other questions or? So just so you know, Troy, we are putting together, uh, a city table for your banquet, um, coming up. So, um, yeah, well, we hope to fill it. So, uh, those of you up here that haven't responded and would like to get in. Well, I'm gonna turn it all in tomorrow. So.
Okay.
I'll respond.
Yeah. Let me know.
I'll respond as well.
You will.
Spouses?
It's, huh?
Spouses?
Well, um, we, we will pay for you.
But sit with me?
Yeah. No, no. You have to sit over on your, how many on a table?
Uh, I believe it's eight.
Eight.
Eight to ten. I'd have to circle back on you with that.
We might, we might get tea tables. Who knows? But.
I heard that the city table is the most fun table. So.
Yeah, it is the most fun.
Troy, I have a question. I was wondering why you guys planned yours two days after the Royal Lady Gala?
I think the Royal Lady Gala plan, there's two days before or. I really don't know. Alls I know is that the Enzian had one date in March that we could have, and it was the sixth.
Guess what? To add, to add to this, they, the, uh, the Shalanka Greater Wenatchee or whatever their, uh, group is called is on Wednesday night. Um. So it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, if you really wanna take in all of this stuff. Anyway. I just thought it's interesting. March must be banquet time, I guess. Anyway, we look forward, you'll, you'll hear from me tomorrow with a bunch of names.
Fantastic. All right. Good talking to y'all.
Great.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you. So you got anything to add to that?
I, I was just pretty much jumped off already, but I just wanted to quickly say that we did, we speed dating through. We had our big chamber retreat.
Right, a retreat.
And we're very proud of the fact that we're now, we're getting into a group, we're gonna be able to be giving money back to the community. I think the community's gonna start finding out, oh, we wanna, if we fit these mission goals, Troy's making a whole separate website for what people go to and say, if you fit this, they apply and this, we don't period, and then we're gonna be having more retreats if we. And whether we made or not, new money or not, excess money. It's not lodging tax related type thing. We can give back with the whole concept of, hey, put up their big party and give some of these back. And so we're very excited to be able to continue that positive.
It's awesome. Very awesome.
That's great.
Well, you, you will have already exceeded the give back from previous, uh, Oktoberfest.
But. A great silver lining.
Yeah.
The chamber's running up shovel.
Yes. Yep.
Remember best. It's great.
Yeah. Players. Good community members. That's great. All right, let's go ahead and move on then. Thank you. I assume this is you, Maggie?
Yes. Um, maybe share a screen. Okay. Yeah. So thank you. Uh, tonight I just wanted to reopen the discussion of, um, projections and balconies over the right of way. Uh, we do have new council members, so some of you may not have been present when we discussed this previously. Um, but we have had several, um, building owners, business owners, building owners downtown wanting to do some remodeling and actually, uh, adding balconies and extensions over the city right of way. Um, we had discussion in the past about, um, would we charge, uh, an annual fee, a monthly fee? How do we handle that? So, um, my staff, we reached out to several different jurisdictions, including city of Wenatchee to see how they handle these kind of things. Um, and put together kind of a draft, and this is rough, rough, rough draft, but wanted some feedback before we move ahead. Um, but looking at how we could kind of regulate this in our downtown, uh, core. Um, and the feedback I got from both the council and from the designer review board, we talked about, should we have like a maximum that we allow that approachment over the right of way? And, uh, I believe based on those discussions, we came up with eight feet as the max. Um, that seemed like, a- and that's a maximum. But also with the designer review board, they're looking at the, the scale of the project as well. So you're not gonna have a giant balcony if it's a small building. Um, so it's, it's the size and scale. It has to, to, to make sense. Uh, so what I have drafted here is a section that would be, uh, in Title eighteen under our exceptions from commercial and industrial dimensional standards. So up above is the district, uh, that's right, but the development chart, standards chart for commercial zones, which already allows you to go to zero feet. Uh, but this would allow that additional approachment that is allowed in the building code. Uh, this first section I made, I, I wrote it as applicable to the central commercial, uh, and the general commercial zoning districts of the city. And I believe it was written that way because those zones both have a zero foot front yard setback. So this would be the only, those would be the only zones that this would apply to. Uh, and then number one talks about where the vertical clearance above grades, projecting windows, balconies, architectural features, mechanical equipment, things like that, is more than eight feet. That one inch of encroachment may be permitted for each additional one inch of clearance above eight feet with a maximum encouragement of four feet. Now, you know, this is exactly regurgitated out of the building code. So I didn't make this up, and this is how other jurisdictions handle it. I probably wouldn't even have to put it in here because the building code would allow it. But I think it helps with clarity from a zoning perspective, because if you look at the chart, it says zero feet, and we could say, oh, no, but zero, it doesn't say you can go more than that. So I just like that consistency and balance, and it helps, uh, just remove any ambiguity for, um, an applicant. So, um, I do have a sample that I can show you in a second of kind of what that means, but it basically, once you get up to above eight feet, every inch over that, you can go out an inch, um, up to a maximum of four feet. And that's anything that's over eight feet, but less than fifteen feet. So there's kind of this, this little space where we allow that projection, but not too much. And that's to allow for, you know, vehicular traffic, for, uh, pedestrian safety, for, uh, access to utilities, if we have a project that we need to, to access those for. Um, so the second section then talks about if we have an approachment that's fifteen feet or more above grade. In the building code, they don't regulate how far you can go. It just says, if you're over fifteen feet, it's basically unlimited. Uh, we wanted to kind of hone in on and kind of regulate this in our zoning code just because of our downtown and, um, and we do have utilities in, in the road and, um, wanting to have access to that and just aesthetically too. Uh, I don't think, we kind of came up with and brainstormed with the designer review board, be like, what would be a maximum that we would see in a Bavarian type of, um, region? So this is why we put, um, that eight, maximum eight, eight foot approachment within fifteen feet, uh, or more above grade. Um, so we didn't just pull that number out of nowhere. There was some thought to it. Um. Then we have some, uh, number three here, we added some specific conditions. If somebody is going to apply for this. And this is just more so that, uh, we are looking at it from a likely perspective. Is there a concern by public works or the building official? And then from a, an aesthetic standard from the designer review board. So, um, A here, letter A says, all requests will be approved by the public works director, building official, again, the designer review board to ensure public safety and consistency with the local codes. Um, I think it's important that everyone has eyes on that because there could be a special circumstance where there could be a liability or an issue that we're not thinking of. An example would be if a balcony is projecting and we haven't addressed snow removal or, um, and that could be an impact on the, the people below. So I know when we looked at the loft, for example, they had a system built in, so it was, um, almost like heated with a drainage system, so it drained into the stormwater, um, to alleviate, I mean, to push snow off the balcony or to, you know, have things through. Yeah. I don't need to get into details, but sorry. Um, and then here, uh, letter B is that full harmless agreement. And you guys have seen this come through periodically when we have, uh, eve overhangs or balconies, um, uh, mechanical equipment we have in the alley. I'm trying to think of some of the things that have come before you, but this is just something that we do require anyway, but wanted to codify it so it's clear. Uh, and then the letter C is the carrying liability insurance. We also require that, but I didn't put in a specified amount because that changes based on our. Uh, I can't think of the, our insurance requires different levels of liability insurance. And so I didn't wanna put a specific amount here because it's subject to change. Um, so this would just require them to carry that liability insurance. Um, so far that's all we have drafted in speaking with the city of Wenatchee. They don't charge like a monthly, they, they don't, these scare space. Um, the building code allows, if you're over that fifteen feet, they just allow the use. Um, so that was just one thing I wanted to ask, um, the council to, for some feedback or consideration, what, what direction you'd like me to go, because I'd be happy to try to put something together. Um, yeah.
Do they charge like any sort of like initial fee or?
Uh, there's a building for a fee there. Yeah, there's the building for a fee. And they, and then they're just tasked with the, the fee of the liability insurance. And then that reporting of the indemnity agreement, uh, or the harmless agreement, uh. I, I just, it, I'm seeking direction because I, I, I won't, I don't wanna invest a lot of time in that if, if you don't want, uh, a monthly or annual, even just a annual fee. Um.
Is there any examples that you've seen out there of any municipalities charging an airspace fee?
I had, I, I asked my staff to reach out to several jurisdictions and they could not find an example where they, they were charging that lease, that airspace. It might be in bigger cities maybe, but you know, trying to be, look at comparable areas like in our region, they. Um, I can do some more digging if there is, if that is the direction that you wanna go and try to find maybe some options. Um, but the purpose today is just to get a feel for how this is drafted, if this is, if I'm in the right ballpark. And then, um, if so, moving forward with drafting something, um, because we have requests coming in that potentially could come through this year. Uh, the loft is kind of pending. We already have a building permit ready to go that we've reviewed. Um, but they, they weren't sure how they wanted to move forward if there was going to be you know, some high costs that are annual that they pay. Uh, and just wanting some clarity before they move forward with that project. Uh, I meant to, to show you guys this, and I apologize for not showing this sooner. They, these were little, um, excerpts out of the building code commentary that kind of helped explain that, uh, here's that eight foot maximum, um, and or eight foot minimum, and once you go over that, how that progressively allows you to build out over the, the right of way. So, uh, up to that maximum of four feet. And here, this is just my chicken scratch, because I don't have the ability to draw something like this on my own. Uh, but just kind of explaining that once you go over that fifteen feet, um, but above that eight, then you can go out to that eight foot maximum.
So Megan, I'm not clear about if they, they can either go up, minimum is eight feet above sidewalk.
Yeah. So you can't have anything overhanging unless.
So you leave eight feet high. And four, and four feet wide.
And you can go out four feet into the right of way if you're between eight and fifteen.
Okay.
Kind of the magic number. And then when you get above fifteen, which is pretty much the clearance for like a large truck. Uh, and equipment and things like that, then you can go out even further. You basically double what, how far you could go.
So if you're up fifteen feet, you can go out almost double.
Eight feet.
Eight feet out. Okay. If it fits with the building, you're. And the design board is having a major, they're the ones that kind of are the turn gate on this?
Well, they, it's saying you could go up to eight feet, but let's say there was a smaller scale building that it would be not personal to have. Not saying that right, but, um, where it would just look awful.
Right, yeah.
It's, it's true Bavarian. Um, typically the eaves will cover that, that balcony as well. And so just that, they, they have the, um, the knowledge and background to kind of make those calls. And, um, so it would be up to the designer review board. Um, typically they come through the designer review board before they submit their building permit. So people would know that this just tells them, hey, that's your maximum, but you need approval for.
Yeah.
Different, um, departments.
So the eight feet you're talking about is above the sidewalk?
Yeah. So from the building.
The ground to the.
So yeah, so if you go from the sidewalk up eight feet, that's a zone where like you can't approach over the sidewalk. So assume this is in this picture, are you? Uh, it is the building face, and this is the sidewalk. The street's out here. So there's between zero and eight feet, you can't project over the right of way with anything, even signs, like our sign code says, can't project over the right of way unless it's above eight feet. So that's already in code. That's, and that's building code. It's so people aren't getting, things aren't calling out people. But, um, anyway, that, that's just, it's a building code. It's a safety issue. So this is just saying, once you get above eight feet, you can start incrementally going out up to that four feet. And then once you go fifteen feet above right of way, you can go up eight feet. Building code says you can go out definitely, but we're trying to.
Yeah, yeah. That sounds crazy.
A, put a cap on it.
How wide are, are sidewalks in the downtown core?
They are eight feet, I believe they are. I think so.
They're what?
I think they're eight feet.
Okay.
Are they all eight feet wide from the face of the buildings?
I'll call them that. Some have more space because I'm, I'm trying to think about those sidewalk seating areas. We have to maintain five feet of sidewalk, and I know some are wider than three. So I think it's variable and I could get that information.
My, my only, my only request would be maybe we consider less than eight feet out if the sidewalk is not fully eight feet, because I'd.
Yeah.
Would the wind stop at the edge of the sidewalk? Yeah. If that makes sense.
Hmm.
Um, if the sidewalk is less than eight feet wide, but if it's greater than that, then the stopping point at eight feet seems to make sense.
Yeah. So we could say a maximum eight, maximum eight feet or the width of the sidewalk, whichever is.
Less.
Less.
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that. Something clear.
These are probably two strange questions, but if snow fell off the balcony onto somebody, is, is that an issue or their, snow won't do that off a balcony?
Sorry, I'm, I'm writing my thought book.
They would have, they have to plan for that. Uh, that's gotta be part of their design, their plan is that, how they're gonna mitigate so that it doesn't, that. So like she was saying, the loft is actually, you know, warm it and melt it so it doesn't fall down, the snow. But others might.
Yeah. If we get a big snow though, that's not gonna melt and go down there that fast. Um. They just wouldn't use it. But if, which you got snow load on it, probably it's not a safe place to walk. I don't know. I'm trying to put a picture, get a picture in my mind. I would have liked to seen actual, an actual picture.
And I can get that. This was just for an initial conversation. Like, am I moving in the right direction? And do you want me to look at fees for this? That's kind of my.
I don't.
I was also wondering if, um, you know, you, they, if, we all pay property taxes, including a building. If they have a balcony, does that increase their property taxes?
I mean, it's in the, I think it's an assessment.
Increase in value, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll increase the value of their building. So yeah, they'll pay more tax. I'm not interested in airspace lease or anything like that. I don't wanna disincentivize something that makes us very Bavarian. So I don't think that that would be appropriate.
So you're asking if we, we should charge for that? Is that, was that a consideration?
That was a previous.
That was a previous question.
And I don't think that that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
So I was just looking for direction. If I, if the majority of you says, yeah, we're not interested in that, this gives me a path forward to put together. And I can show you what this could look like. I'll try to get some pictures. We already have some of this downtown already. So.
Lots of it.
Uh, so this isn't a change, it's just making it codified and, and easier for misinterpret, like, you don't want misinterpretation, just consistency.
Yeah.
Uh, so people know what to expect when they come in, so I'm in.
Hey, how do we make sure we're not liable for? Well, we're not liable for what comes off the balcony, whether it's silver or what.
That's part of that whole harmless agreement and the liability insurance that they have to carry, with the city has additional insured on their policy.
Do we have harmless?
So I mean, to the extent, I mean, somebody could always travel to. That's my understanding. They can always suit say.
We already have from. That have so on them. And it's not creating a condition.
Yeah. More buildings have this already than no downtown, up Front Street. So.
So what we're trying to do now, since we have a lot of this already, maybe not to this extent, we have some that are four feet, I mean, overhangs. Um, is as they come in for remodels and permits, if we don't have that whole harmless indemnity agreement in place, we're getting it now. And asking them to carry that liability insurance now. Uh, and so eventually, we'll, we'll see this, uh, across the board. But again, this is just specific to that larger encroachment other than eaves. Uh, again, it, it's to make it more clear. Uh, and this is allowed in the building code. I'm just basically putting it into our zoning code with some conditions. So it's just for clarity.
Is our attorney, um, weighing in on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Maggie, for the record, I, I think everything about your draft proposals is great. I, I don't wanna charge for airspace, especially if it's unprecedented.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That helps. So I think I have some direction. So if I have some visuals, if, I mean, I haven't even brought this to the planning commission yet, but this was a discussion topic. It's something that has been on my radar for a while. So if you're okay with us moving this forward, the planning commission to work through, that, that's all I want to speak. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Perfect. I won't think any more things. Stop, shut it.
All right. Next is resolution on the ridgeline development discussion. So.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, if you all recall in December, we had a study session where group citizens were concerned about the particles illuminated across the top of Tumwater Mountain. Presented to council a direct resolution, um, opposing all development on mountains and ridgelines surrounding the city. Um. This is on your agenda for March eleventh to adopt, adopt this ordinance. Uh, there was a request to have a study session to discuss the draft that's provided to council back in December, I believe, eight. It was, has since been, um.
They haven't.
Revised, uh, since you last saw it. And the most, uh, current revision is in your packet. And I've got it open up in Word. So if you have any changes you'd like to make to that draft resolution, um, now I can do that.
Rest of the, the council can tell me if I'm completely off base, but honestly, I would love if we want to move forward with a resolution as the city council, I would love for us to write our own and not have it be something that is suggested by.
One of the parties.
A, a party in the community is pushing one side or the other, if that makes sense. I think that we need to have a foundational conversation first as a city council and whether or not we wanna pursue this action. And then that should, I think, should come from the city with our direction and not be an edit to something that was provided to us. Because I think that that sends, um, an inappropriate message out from the city council if we are taking a document from a group of people and editing it.
I understand the question. Yeah. I didn't know that anybody, but we, uh, wrote those kinds of things.
What's that?
Um, well, that guy that's an attorney said that he wrote that, um, what's it called again?
Resolution?
Yeah, the resolution sheet. And I didn't know that we allowed people to do that.
Well, anybody can submit.
Do, it, it doesn't mean, yeah, we don't have to take action on them, but I mean, anybody can say, we'd like you to consider it. I think what we did say last time was that we want something to put forward. So I think that's up to. I think that's up to you guys to. Say if you want it to come from city and what pieces are important in that. If there is, but.
For me personally, uh and again, just my own, just my own position on this. I think that if we choose as a council to move forward on some version of a resolution. To. Shulane County. That it needs to be very focused only on Shulane County code and how we would like to administer them to administer the regulations that they have adopted. Um and, you know, outline where we think they're not implementing their regulations correctly and ask them to do so. I think that we need to eliminate. Anything. Emotional or arbitrary in. The resolution and anything that. Has anything to do with. Religious symbols of any kind or anything like that, because that's not what this is about, it doesn't matter what it is, if we feel like we. Want to have runs a solution that says something. It doesn't matter what is being built up there, it's the fact that we believe that it shouldn't be allowed by Shulane County Code, right, so. Anything specifically, it should be about implementing the regulations as they've been adopted for structures within that zoning and on ridge lines and those sorts of things.
And I guess for me, I'm not too clear on what actually. Shulane County Code says, so I don't. And I feel uh. Unprepared that I didn't look up what the code said, but does anyone know what? Shulane County Code says about structures. In that particular area and what. What is allowed and what's not allowed?
Typically, these sorts of things are regulated. Kind of like signs are. The county right now, I think, is saying that it's just. A structure. But they don't. They don't. They don't have specific regulations just for random structures. And so ju- usually when something is. undefined or. Silent in. An adopted regulation, it's actually prohibited, it's not just allowed outright. And so. Um there's probably some nuance to it, and we'd have to really dig into the language in the county code. But in general, in the zoning up there, which is. The maximum height of any structure can only be thirty five feet, so just under the zoning code, this tall structure is not allowed. But, you know, if it's regulated as a sign, the way Shulane County originally started talking about regulating it, offsite signs are not allowed. Because it's not associated with. An onsite business of the kind or that sort of thing, so um. It is going to be a little bit nuanced, but ultimately, I think we need to dig into the regulations and figure out. Where the county may not be implementing their code correctly and have the resolution be focused on that if we choose to. Do that.
I would agree with that. Um and they do have a couple of paragraphs in there that reference that more general. Thing, but then they adds. Things of other stuff.
Yeah, and it's the other stuff that I just don't think is.
No, I'm I'm just saying that you we can.
I don't think that that needs to be a part of the city council's message.
I think that Dan's kind of right on with this part, because I think. We do want to keep focus, it's a message to the county. And it deals with their code. Nothing else. And it's just, we don't want lighted signs up there, we don't, you know, and so. I don't just like where this thing about the light affecting the animals and stuff. Definitely erroneous, I mean, it's just superlious, so it needs to stick to the code. So it has more more powerful. Punch to it, and it's not diluted by these other things, so I think that's what we had. Yeah, more direct. And we're focused and. We're not getting into what the structure is, we're just saying, we don't want. You know, it's the good, their decision, and who knows what they're going to decide, but I think we need to be very clear about what we don't want. Further code. For what they already have initiated themselves, so.
I also don't think it's a. Appropriate to cite our own municipal code because we don't have jurisdiction on that. So, you know, some of some of those other citations in the draft resolution were problematic to me, but. Because they really don't apply.
One thing about that, that. To discount all the emotional side of this, uh but one thing that I think is pertinent to us is we're. Responding or feeling compelled to respond because we've had such an emotional response from our constituents. That it it affects the people of Levmore. It's brought something to us that we have to deal with uh because of the decisions or lack of decisions from the county, and it's kind of. Shoving it up, uh you know, in our faces that we have to do something, it's like if if there was a code that was being followed in a process that is. Applied equally to everybody. Then it would be kind of a simple matter, uh but if they're not going to follow. The code or the process equally across all parties, then then that. That is the the problem, it creates a rift in our community, and that that is, I think, the really reason why we're having this discussion.
And the Seattle Times. Article this last week definitely breathed some new life into all of them.
The uh. Yeah, I get I got the feeling from that that uh that article that the county is really hope, they don't have a building permit yet. They're still waiting for them to. Put in for it with other additional info. That's what I'm saying, is a complete one and. The complete one has to have signing off from both the Forest Service. And which, again. It's in that. Zoning, right, and then also FAA. Which, my understanding is. They don't want something that high up there either, so I think they're just hoping somebody else kills it, then they don't have.
Don't they have to go and do some testing on soils?
I think we should just stay out of it, it's in the county on pri- private property, and it's the county's issue. So that's why.
I kind of I can't remember if I if I elaborated on my perspective uh last time we talked about this, but I I kind of feel like. Talk about his neighbors. The county's neighbor of ours, uh the landowner up there is a neighbor of ours, and if my neighbor next door. Violated the code by constructing, say, an eight foot high fence or put in something that was dangerous, you know, for my kids or. Something that was not allowed by code, um I would ask the neighbor to, please don't. Please don't do that, and if the neighbor says, I'll do whatever I want, it's free country, and then I would say, okay, then I will approach. The juris- authority having jurisdiction, and I would say, can you please enforce the code on my neighbor, uh I tried to, I tried talking to them, and they refused, and. That's kind of exactly what we're doing here, we don't have any authority, I can't go over my neighbor's property and. Remove whatever they did, but I can ask the authority having jurisdiction. To enforce the code, and so that's where I think we do absolutely have. Uh a right and a duty to say something. Especially when we've got, I mean, I've heard so many people. Who would like us to say something as the neighbors.
I'm unchangeable. On that on that issue, I'm unchangeable.
What'd you say?
I am unchangeable. I think we should stay out of it, it is a county issue. On private property.
Yeah, well, I just.
I read some stuff today, and it's getting ugly.
Well, and we don't want to. But we also want to do, like you said, Mike, I mean, I think it's it's. Old. Jurisdictions accountable for what there was and what their codes and what they're doing, and that's, you know. They they would expect the same of us. So. Being a good neighbor is, right?
I think it'd be wrong for us to ignore the fact that they're not following the code, right, and having the impact on us, you know, community, I think that's not. That's what the issue is, it isn't. It isn't because it's not our jurisdiction or that's private property, it's that they're not following their own established code for a structure like that, and that's. Having a huge impact, and so. We're going to address it, so I don't think we can walk away from that. I don't think we're going where we're not supposed to go.
Right.
I think we're.
So what if we, what if we um. Try to pare this down to what we're hearing is the nut of it and just. Circulate it between now so that you see some things and got a chance to respond to that piece of it. From us before we just bring it and have that open discussion, because I want I want the buy-in here as much as possible, we. Not everybody, but. As much as possible of what we should be discussing.
Is that, do we have time on our next study session to maybe have a few minutes to review as a council? On our next February meeting?
We could probably make, I mean, especially if we get it out enough ahead of time for you to.
Just to have a discussion as a council before it goes to.
Yeah, can we pump the housing advisory committee? We'd have to bump them.
We gotta bump something.
Yeah, housing advisory committee.
We'll put it on again.
We probably don't need a whole lot of time, if we if we get.
Hopefully, we can get it out, right, something that.
I was saying. If we're not ready by the eleventh, we, I mean. We don't make a decision, but I mean. I would think we could be ready by the.
Yeah, I think we gotta try to hit that because it's been out there everywhere, that that's when it's going to be, so um.
When is the county looking at it? When is the county going to make a decision?
They have to get. The applicant has to submit more materials.
More materials, and they can't do it until it's, it won't be until springtime before they can get up, do that some of their stuff.
Ranger Road has to melt out before they can get their geo site assessment done.
Well, I thought the county could just say, you can't do it.
Well, they could, but they haven't.
They haven't done that yet.
If they're following their code, they had it, they would. They would, that's what they would say, but they they're not following the code, that's that's the issue. David adopted another interpretation.
Not our issue that they're not following their own code, it's theirs.
No, it is ours.
Why?
Because we're a neighbor, we're good neighbors, it's just like if your neighbor right next to you wasn't following the code, you would say. They have to follow the code.
No, I won't, it's my daughter.
Loud parties every night, making you awake.
City staff that if we if we can. Take a good stab at this. We've spent so much time on this already, and like Sharon says, it's it's. It's not, I don't think, we spent too much time on the things that are not what we're talking about, and and I agree with you, let's pare it down. Let's send something over to the county and be done, uh nice to move on from this, um and we don't have to. Continue to deliver.
Yeah, agreed.
Yes. Okay, onward. And this. Your utility rate.
So another discussion item, just to get feedback. Hope you've had an opportunity to read through the story that I wrote for you. Full history there, uh each of the three that are identified, the city pool, the school district, and Wenatchee River Institute. They're each very different and unique in how they've been treated in the past. We have uh both Tracy and I don't want to pronounce your name wrong. So we've got WRI and the school district here, just in case you guys have questions for them, or if they want to provide any input as well. I just do want to hear from you guys, which direction you want to go. To refresh my memory, we have already moved in the rate and fee schedule for the pool and the school district. We pulled that. And looked at the potential because we talked about maybe a memo of understanding, which could be done. Uh particularly with both of their agencies, but it doesn't make any sense to do a memo of understanding from the city to the city. So as I thought about this. Before reaching in time, how does this? Morph from a utility billing standpoint, the rate and fee schedule is. Where it's locked in, it is what we live by for the rates when we enter them. And so it makes sense to me to to keep it within a rate and fee schedule or a resolution. So it doesn't have to be in the rate and fee schedule, I know we removed it. But we could put it back, or I could craft just a completely new resolution that identifies these. Three potential agencies. Whatever direction you guys want to give me as feedback.
I I curious, I you know, I look at this stuff, and I think, you know. Transparency and consistency is is. Vital, just so that everybody knows why we did things, uh why we treat things certain ways, so. If we look at each of these cases. What's the intent? Is it just to save money for kind of some of our cherished institutions, uh because they can't afford it uh?
Well, part of it is that. Each of them has a large water use. But they don't actually have a large sewer use. And because each of them is a commercial account, they're tied to the language in the rate and fee schedule that says. Your sewer rate will be based on your gallons of water used. And so that's what has put all three of these in this situation to have something modified for them. The pool. Has a few restrooms in it. But it's not utilized for very long, a lot of the visitors at the pool are there for less than two hours. They may not even use the restroom while while they're there, they're just there for. But the use of of sewer from the city pool. Has been determined by the previous public works director to. To not be that significant of an impact. Um, school district is obviously lottery a lot of fields, and that is what they're doing. They do have restrooms, they do have a sewer rate built in that they do get charged for. Is it exact, we're not really certain. But in talking with Tracy uh and looking at potential, as I wrote right up, if we were to. Take them off of this meter. And put in another meter, it it's almost fifty thousand dollars a year for them. In an increase in just those. Monthly fees, that doesn't even take into consideration. How much the escalation costs would be. And who would pay for that? Would the city do that, would the school district have to figure that one out, so that one's a really significant one, because we're we're talking three inch meters. At at the school. Uh WRI, I didn't even know about that one until I asked my staff, I said, is there anything else in this yearly calculation that you do? And they said, yeah, there's this other one that does does this. And I went, oh. Interesting, and for them, they. Again, just have a building with one restroom?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, limited public use?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if they weren't outside watering all the foliage that they're watering outside of their facility, they too would have a normal sewer rate. So that's where we're at.
So if you uh if you were another, I can't think of one, but there's so much going on in this little town that I I don't know yet, but uh. Somebody else says, I want. I qualify for that, like, how do I get that same treatment, do we have a methodology for that?
So what has happened with each of these, which have been in place for a very long time? Is they are using their building line for their irrigation. We don't have any others that are doing that currently, and that's not the current practice. Uh when you have a big hotel going. Have any new restaurants that are significant, but a hotel will teach the the best case. They're installing separate irrigation lines from the get-go because they now know the rules, and they don't want to be paying massive sewer rates. So those irrigation lines are installed separately, and. This doesn't affect them.
I'm I'm not opposed or or necessarily, I I just want to make sure I understand.
No, I thought through that too, I'm like, okay, how are we going to deal with this if the next person comes along, yeah.
Well, that's how why you're. Is there another one out there, because we originally only had us in the school district and. And it was staff looking and saying, well, there is this other one, but that's really, that's it that we know of at this point, right?
And we do have, there's, I think somewhere around sixty irrigation accounts. In total, and the city is probably close to thirty of them. in total, and the city is probably close to thirty of them. So, you know, the Enzian has irrigation accounts. There are, the Best Western has irrigation. They've already built them. Uh, I believe so. They actually, uh, have a separate meter for their pools.
So the issue here is that whatever you pay and since they're watering with treated water. You know, so they get charged for the sewer comparable to what they spend on the water?
It's based on the gallons of water.
So, so, okay, but there's a percentage of the water that's used that makes up the sewer rate.
Yeah, so it's a mathematical calculation to go seventy-five hundred gallons is one E R U. You had a million gallons and you divide that by seventy-five hundred and you get a number and then you multiply that by the base rate. So for instance, um, W R I, I think it was five or six times, if, if we actually use the gallons, the base rate would be multiplied by either five or six instead of just one, which is what they're currently being doing. And the school district, it was pretty significant for them as well.
And this is just because we don't have sewer meters.
Yeah, we don't mirror sewer and it's because these entities that we're talking about don't have separate meters for their irrigation.
Right.
Right, but all of this would be, solved if we actually metered our sewer in some instances, right? Because then we wouldn't have to have an arbitrary amount calculation for ERUs. Right?
It's expensive to meter sewer, we don't, a sewer meters is something that we typically have, so it's normally like a, a commercial boom that's inside a manhole.
Can you talk a little louder?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, um, so metering gravity sewer is not a standard practice, um, the easiest way we have to do so, is inside a manhole, uh, to put in like a partial plume that we can make a measurement from and then, uh, essentially, transmit that data, uh, so it's, it is expensive to install that. It's not.
They'll be able to service it anyway.
I mean, there's, there's the two options, one, yeah, you learn how to meter sewer. Which if you're gonna do it for one, you gotta do it for all, so you're talking about a system-wide installation process, which, millions and millions and millions of dollars on the city. Um, or water is to separate these two, which again, we looked at that and it was extremely costly for the school district in particular.
I thi- I think if you can, and I, I read the list frankly, you know, when you start adding all these acronyms, E R Us and stuff like, it'll elucidate pretty fast. Uh, but as long as somebody, somebody asks the question like, how did that come to be and, and it's clear in our policy, then I think, then we should proceed with, however it's easiest for you to put it together, you know, I, I don't have.
Continuing with practice, but just putting it back into some sort of form.
Yeah.
Is everyone in concurrence with that?
Are you wanting each individual to be treated differently the way they historically have, or do everybody start being treated, the same, but outside of how all the other commercial connections are?
It'd be nice if there's a standardized approach, we recognizing that would, because they don't have, it, it's, it's not feasible to put in a new meter, uh, you know, for the irrigation, but if they did do that now with a new construction, they're gonna pay way less. That we can acknowledge that and treat it accordingly, however that makes sense.
Okay, uh, with W R I and the school district, I thought those two could be the same for sure. The pool is different because it's only open for a few months out there, both of them are year-round, and so we can take the same months and back out, the irrigation months like we've done with the school. Um, in my write-up, I noted that the school actually irrigates more than the three months that we're subtracting, which is great because it does give a little bit of, uh, cushion for the potential use, so they are still flushing some toilets during summer months from, activities that may be going on that are very minimal within buildings. I, I would have to analyze W R I, but I can definitely put that together and see how that works out for them. And see if it's gonna be much of an effect. So, yeah, how about if I bring a resolution and I will put it in the rate and fee schedule? We'll just do a separate resolution, when we do do the rate and fee schedule though, what I would like for utility billing is that we just add a sentence within it, that references this other resolution for historical purpose that way. Because I know when people leave, everyone goes, well, why are they doing that? And if you read through and you can't find the language anywhere, it gets lost over time and, and that was my fear with an M O U, is M O U's, they just kind of get forgotten or resolutions don't, so, but that was my thought. Okay, uh, this is great, I will work on putting the draft together, um, I'm not quite sure I'll be able to get this done by Friday, which is the deadline for your next packet for me. So if nothing else, I'll have it for, for treating in March. Did either one of you want to share any thoughts or?
Cause I'd like to hear you guys, what's your, what's your issues are.
If you could come up to the podium, that would be really fantastic, thank you.
Hi guys, I'm Kanuti Tarnella, the Executive Director of the Wenatchee River Institute. And I'd just like to share with you how much I appreciate you thinking about this in a way that is, consistent with the public benefit that Wenatchee River Institute provides. Uh, we're really specifically talking about our community gardens, which provide thirty-three families a place to raise vegetables and flowers every season. Uh, you know, we've invested in this year after year. Uh, this year, three thousand dollars in improving the raised beds, making some of them accessible to somebody who has limited ability. Uh, it's a great community resource, there are hundreds of hours of community, uh, volunteer work that go into that beyond the folks who are gardening in these beds. And it's a treasure, uh, when I heard about the potential risk to, paying for all of that water, paying for it like it was going down the wastewater pathway, uh, it would take what is currently a pay what you can fifty-five dollar, fee to join the, the garden, uh, and probably make it over two hundred dollars just to cover those costs. Right now, we only charge for the property taxes on that parcel and pay for the sewer would, make it prohibitively expensive for many folks, you have to find another way to, to fund it, so I appreciate y'all thinking about this.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Tracy Adu, Superintendent Cascade School District and happy election evening. So thank you also for considering this, um, on behalf of this school district. As you all know, we do try to keep our grounds in good condition over the summer and it's a community resource. And, uh, we try to be good community partners, we allow a lot of these activities to happen on our grounds and in our schools. When we aren't using the fields of the tennis courts or whatever, we try to be good community partners. But I think Chantel has stressed it real well that because we have a lot of grounds, the usage, uh, you know, watering is disproportionate to our sewage use, which in the summer is almost non-existent. For us, what this would have done is change what's about a fifteen percent increase to most residents, to a hundred and fifteen percent increase for the school this year. Which would probably mean that we would have to change how we receive the power on our fields. Because that's just a massive, massive increase for the school district. So I appreciate you, again, we want to be good partners, we understand that, a twelve or fifteen percent increase is where we are in this world, but a hundred and fifteen percent increase, it's just a really massive increase for our organization. That we all know, uh, the tight budgets were all there, so I don't know, but, it was really clear until Saturday, Chantel, how much of a massive. So thank you very much for this consideration, uh, thank you for being very generous.
I just did work in Pashaslin.
Oh, Pashaslin, Sharon. Also Dryden. There's a whole thing about this and water shares. The thing that's very complicated and now we do a very bad job of explaining how this works. We just had to make a resolution to transfer, we have three, we have six extra shares. Irrigation shares, Pashaslin was very heavily transferred three down to Dryden. And so it gets very complicated very fast in Pashaslin and Dryden. But, you know, we're tied into the water shares and all sorts of things, so everyone knows better. But that's all.
Okay, thanks.
But we tried to get things out too.
For me?
I said, we try to be good members. There's some, uh, some people who are irrigated like right behind Watts Field. And, you know, sometimes pipes get damaged and it's, it's just a very complicated thing. Whenever I hear water in Pashaslin, it's the same sentence. That's okay, I will hold it against you. But, yeah, it's all, it's all complicated water.
Sounds like it.
And I can get you better information than I have because it's so complicated.
No, I was just curious whether you got a great deal down there and were charging it way more up here or something.
I can get you more information on that, this, definitely we have appreciated the partnership with the city and the, you know, the understanding that our water use and sewage use are not proportional, so definitely not a guarantee. So we have appreciated that, dude, I would just say that Pashaslin and Dryden are different.
Thanks. I would clarify for the record, if anyone was sweet from the public, they do pay for all the water.
Right.
At the normal rate, so.
I apologize.
No, 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 I just wanted to clarify that for everyone, that the water is paid for based on current rate structures without a doubt. Kanuti, am I allowed to email you with just the general W R I email account that's on the website?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, I'll be sure to email both of you the draft resolution and give you the dates for, for, for when it comes back in case you want to attend as well, okay. Were there any other questions or suggestions from either of us?
Nope.
Excellent.
Toby.
Thanks, Mayor, um, in my weekly update to you guys on Friday, I did ask you to please consider and come with some thoughts of, topics and potential dates for a spring retreat. Um, typically, the spring retreat is held, um, April, May?
Yeah, April.
Um, typically, since I've been here, it's been on a Friday, but we can make ourselves available on a weekend day as well. Um, and the last couple of retreats, we focused on different things based on what you guys want to discuss. One recommendation that I would have that we add to the agenda, if not take most of the day for, is developing goals. Um, council goals were developed in two thousand sixteen, they were reviewed in two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty, but they haven't been discussed, by the council since I've been here, when I came in August twenty-two. Uh, so that's one topic that I would recommend that we do is, is, is review and discuss the goals and set aside some time for that. And any other topics that you might have, um, it will take care of all the planning and getting speakers if we need and, and whatnot, but, um, I didn't even know we had council goals. Yeah. I'll make a note to email them to you guys so you know. I'll know my Friday update.
There you go.
I really appreciate those. Good.
I do too. Probably don't take you too long.
It's time well spent. And are we hoping to establish like a date? No, if you give me a parameter, what I'll do is I'll sit out a doodle poll. Yeah, so if you could tell me, we want in April, May or June, we want that Friday or Saturday, or Sunday, or Wednesday, or whatever, and then I can work with Andrea and put it out a doodle poll.
Can we just say a Friday now?
You can. Eleventh or eighteenth.
I was gonna say last year, or yeah, twenty-four, we did it on Friday, April nineteenth.
I'm gonna be.
And on the budget calendar, I incorporated Friday, April eighteenth of this year.
I will not be there for Friday, April eighteenth.
But I did put subject to change, so.
I like to stay out of doing.
Strategy.
I like, I like.
April eleventh currently works, although we do have a workshop, uh, with a council meeting that Tuesday. There's the wildfire workshop that Wednesday, there's the Van Field Festival on Thursday.
That sounds like a really busy week. I personally would like to not have to take a day off of work for our workshop, to be quite honest. That's just my own personal preference.
Or Sunday.
Sunday.
I can do, uh, any Saturday in April except for the thing.
I don't know, my calendar is supposed to be.
With the doodle, yeah. But if we, if we know we got one Saturday, that barrels it and then we can do the doodles.
Yeah, I could, I could go for a Saturday.
Okay, well, for Saturdays in April, I can tell you that I won't be here for the nineteenth. But we can put out the twelfth and the twenty-sixth as potential dates. And then we can.
Here.
Oh, shoot, we got one day for you guys. That is here for twelve.
What about May?
What about May?
Yeah, we can go into May. When is, uh, Mayfest?
We can just do a deep dive on that. We'll just get it all done. Saturday and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For Saturday.
Even May third?
Is that the first Saturday?
It is, that's, that's when we're gonna be in fair. Mayfest, right? I thought that was the first weekend. On the calendar.
Well, the, cause it's second weekend is always apple blossoms. Before then.
All right, we will, uh, we'll send you out a doodle poll.
Great.
Thanks.
And I walk back into my garage door. I bumped the thing accidentally in the garage dirtie down and when I backed in, I thought, my God, somebody's driven up the driveway and hit me, hit my car.
And I had to cover the rescue.
Yes, you did.
All right, we are. Council updates, suggestions for future agenda items. Anybody have something that's burning for them?
Yeah, I got, I would like to spend some, yeah, a study session discussing the results of the community survey. There's sixteen questions, I looked them up, uh, there's no real overall summary of that, and it's just, there's, uh, let's see. Hold this thing up. And it's been brought up by some of the folks in the community. But I think it's worth, I mean, we spent a lot of time on that for use it as a basis, but I don't think any of us have really looked at. You know, there's sixteen questions, we had over close to nine hundred people, actually, I think it was over. Anyway, nine hundred plus participated in that thing and I think it'd be worth, where the community was at, and what was the value of them, what they didn't value, where their, um, perceptions were, um, you know, there's some pretty good information there that I think is worth our time.
Well, the information is there, what, I, I want to know what you want to do with it because it's already, so that information is all gone to our consultants that'll be working on our, our comprehensive plan, so they've got all of those, information and, I mean, May's been working with them, Kara's been working with, I mean, what we said is this is the beginning, it's gonna get funneled into all of these pieces and through this comprehensive plan. But I just want to know.
What do I want to do with it?
What else, what else do you want to do? Cause that was what we said we were gonna do with it. Is make sure that it gets incorporated and is a piece of what gets fed into. And then, and then there'll be ongoing pieces of. And then, and then there'll be ongoing pieces of public dialogue about those, each of those. Individual pieces that were. A part of that, so I just. I mean, I, I, I just wanna know what the intention is, because. I think we were pretty clear that we, we brought it all together and all of those individual comment, I mean, there's tons of them.
You're right.
But they're, but they're, they're all captured, they're all there.
What are we doing with those comments?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's being, it's being funneled into. Input into the comprehensive plan. And that's what its intention was. But you're not gonna, I mean, you're gonna analyze each one of them? No, but there's, you know, you pull those together and again.
Yeah, I mean, so we, we reviewed. I, we just left a consultant today.
Consultant.
And, uh, that was, that's going to be part of the package that they, they're using that for our big community vision. And we are going to have a series of workshops for kind of, we're gonna group elements together that are like land use and housing together. Uh, and I, I envision having. Gosh, different community pop-up events, uh, there will be more discussion and they're pulling though from those visioning sessions. Typically with a comprehensive plan update, they start with the visioning sessions. Um, and the consultants are involved in that. We've already started that process, which they thought was pretty cool. Uh, and so they're gonna take that and continue to move it forward, but there will be opportunities for more community engagement for sure. Uh, looking at all the different elements, so there will be some that's focused on more parks and rec, more on. Um, housing, more on climate resiliency, more on economic development, so people can kinda pick and choose where they wanna be more involved. Uh, but they are using that as their guiding point.
This is the folks who are, we're gonna comprehensive plan. I guess I was concerned that. There was a lot of voice about, the third thing that. Third highest thing was very close was over tourism by the community. And over forty percent of those responses came from the city that lived here. And so, I think. I think that we need to pay attention to that kinda information. And just not say, yep, that's how they are and just pass it over. And I feel like that's what's happening. If they're telling us, they're tired of their, their blocks being, uh, packed out for six, five weeks during Christmas. And you can't go anywhere during that time and we're saying, well, the chamber's doing a great job and they are, but. It's having a huge impact on our community and that's, and I feel like that's gonna slide away. So I don't know how to address, I tell you what, Meg, I don't sure how to address it. Maybe it's not this way, but. We have to address that, so.
The other, the other thing that's going on right now is the county is engaged, um, with consultants around. The whole tourism and the pluses and minuses of tourism for the county as a whole.
Did the WSU study?
No, no, this is a separate one that's just ongoing now. In fact, tomorrow I get interviewed by them. I'm on the task force that they put together, so there's two of us from Leavenworth, two from Shalane, there's some from the county. But it's being paid for by the county to look at. Kind of all the layers of tourism, including the environmental impacts and all of that, so. It's, it's the pluses and the minuses, they're not, they're not saying, you know, they're just, it's not a promotional thing, it's. Understanding what really is happening with all of the tourism and. Um, so the, you know, the county's also doing something, so I just wanted to let you know that that's. That's also in the works. Um, but yeah, I, I, you know, I think. I think the. Yeah, I'll, I'll just leave it at that, but so we've got a comprehensive plan, they're doing theirs, but then they're taking on the chunk of, of tourism as well. Um, I think there's gonna be a lot of inputs into that. But, um, I, I don't know what.
Wish you could pull out of this.
What we're gonna, what, well, what else? I mean, you just said, what you wanna see is, and. Those are all things that are gonna be a part of the mix of what we do with a comprehensive plan, but. But just, just going over it again.
Yeah. I did, that was my starting point, I guess, so maybe.
Well, and it's our starting point.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm thinking that. Uh. I don't wanna lose, uh, I don't wanna lose. Track of this thing, cause if, if there is an impact there and you can bet that anybody who lives in those zones close to the city feels it. Uh, I'm one of them, maybe that's why I'm talking this way, uh, but I know it's real and, uh. And so I wanted, how, somehow I want that addressed by the city council. I'm not sure, I can give it some more thought, come back, but I don't want it to slip away in some. Comprehensive plan thing that's so general and you never know what, you know, what, how they get back to them, so that's my fear. That it just gets forgotten.
Have the person with you.
Taylor Bullen.
Zeke, if I, maybe I, I can paraphrase, we've talked about a little bit.
Yeah.
I think one thing that, uh, even when you're involved, sometimes it's hard to summarize, like what are we doing, you know, what are we, we hear. Our community, you know, has concerns about the level of tourism or how it's impacting them anyway.
Right.
And it's not often succinctly explained, and so maybe as a council, we can, we can just say. Uh, good community, we hear you, you know, acknowledging that you're listening, that we, uh, these are actually the things that are being done in response, you know. So sometimes people don't wanna, they don't take a second to put together the fact that the parking committee is dealing with that directly, that the comprehensive plan is dealing with that directly, that. Our emergency responders are dealing with that directly. All these things are. Are responses to the community's concern for the impact of tourism. Uh, and I'm leaving out probably a bunch of other ones that people are working super hard on, um, and sometimes. It, just acknowledging that, that we're doing that and these are the specific items that if anybody asks, we can. I don't know how to put that forward to the community, if it's an interview with the Echo or if it's, uh, putting it on the website, what is your city doing to? Make this a livable community in light of all the tourism, I'm not sure. But sometimes just, just stating it, even if it's obvious to those of us who are doing the work, um, is useful.
Yeah.
Is that, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah, I just. I just wanted to get it out there, maybe get a start on it, so that was my point.
Is it on the horizon? What's that? Parking garage?
Yep, it's on the horizon.
In like far away as Japan?
Japan's not on the horizon if you've looked.
I won't be at their meeting next Thursday, but I intend to have a very rough draft of an R and Q for the parking advisory committee to look at next Thursday.
That would help.
Okay, other thoughts? Issues. Let's take a break then and come back for our regular meeting. I'll call the meeting to Leavenworth City Council for February eleventh, the order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I'm not gonna stand, cause I stood last one of them.
Sharon, you wanna start us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I started to say the Lord's word. I thought, wait a minute, what, 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 what am I doing?
Roll, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Glenn Strand.
Anne Hesper.
Zeke Reuster.
Shane Thayer.
Mike Bedard.
And, uh, council member McMaster's on a plane right now, or else he would have zoomed in, but I would entertain a motion to excuse him.
Some will do.
All right, all in favor, let me see your hands. We've got a consent agenda with one, uh, change, we're pulling item number seven, we're not quite ready for that, so that's the. Agreement with the county, um, and I would entertain a motion to prove the consent agenda is amended.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved by Shane, seconded by Zeke, all in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously. Comments from the public on items, you're the public tonight. Uh, anybody online?
Yeah, we have an Alex G online.
And then, Alex, you don't wanna speak on something not on the agenda?
No hand raised.
No hand raising, okay, we will move on. A reminder that as we go into our items, that we. Are reminded to be respectful of each other, acknowledge that we can disagree and it's okay. And making comments must be recognized by the chair. And address the council as a whole, not individuals, and keep comments focused on the topic being discussed. Our resolutions ordinance orders, item number six is Andy.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, this is a construction agreement with the Department of Commerce Public Works Board for the Bicycle Road Transmission Main Project. Uh, this has been designed and is actually currently being advertised to contractors, we have a walkthrough tomorrow. Um, so this is for the actual construction funding. A six million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollar low interest loan with an interest rate of one point seven one percent and a twenty-year term. Um, if approved, the first payment of this would begin on June first, twenty-sixth. This is in addition to the design construction loan, which was six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The, and a five-year term on that, so we're already made the first payment, uh, on this debt portion. And I'm here if you have any questions.
To entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute. The construction loan contract between the city of Leavenworth and the Department of Commerce Public Works Board for the city's water transmission main. Placement well site to Mill Street construction project in the amount of six million, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Shane, seconded by Ann, any other questions? Okay, all in favor, let me see your hands. Yeah, and passed unanimously. Skipping seven, we'll go to eight, um, and that two is Andy, Wenatchee Valley Regional Decap Facility Use.
Yes, so this is a use agreement, uh, in order for our team to use the city of Wenatchee's decap facility for full, uh. Catch basin, spoils, and for street sweepings. Right now, we don't have a good place to dispose of these, we take them out to the cemetery to dewater. Uh, those of you who've been on the hens for a while, probably remember, we did a two, or yeah, like a two hundred and forty thousand dollar cleanup job out there to remove. All of this waste. We do not want to decant out there.
Yeah.
So moving forward, we really do wanna use Wenatchee's decap facility and that's why we have this agreement before you tonight.
Yeah, are they, are, I'm not familiar, are these rates like typical, like is this like twenty-four hundred dollars annually and then? A tipping fee of hundred and ninety per, per dump, is that? Is that good?
We don't have anything else that we are able to use this for, um. I'm trying to think what we. I don't remember the cost when we just haul directly to the landfill, but that was after de-watering as well, uh.
Yeah, the problem is we just don't have a spot to de-water.
Go up the old system, we're looking at it, even if we're hauling, uh. Like one load a week, we're looking at about ten thousand dollars in tipping fees. Which not, for me, I'm like, that is not, that's not crazy.
Yeah, how frequently did we clean up out of the cemetery for?
Right now, we're dumping out there and then we have a waste management bin, but then once things, once we dewater, then we're picking up. I don't know the frequency that we're having that been picked up. We also don't currently have a catch basin cleaning program ever, like. To my knowledge and talking with our crew, not all catch basins in the city have ever been cleaned. So this would be our path forward to implementing that program as well.
Okay.
With that, I don't really know how much we're gonna generate. Uh, it's gonna be one of those things once we get into, we'll, we'll learn what we have going on and how much we're gonna need through the system.
Good. So we don't have like projected amount per year that we'll spend on, on this?
Again, the ballpark we were just talking about is starting with ten thousand dollars and.
A year?
I mean, even after the first month or two that we met this, I think it'd be much better to do.
Really, all we've had is this street sweeping that we've been doing, so. And that's been our problem is we've never had a place for the others, so we've avoided doing them, but that's not good. We're trying to get, you know, proactive, that.
Right.
Doing good things before they're a problem, so this is all part of that.
And they're already a problem.
Yeah, right, right, but.
The Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the use agreement with the city of Wenatchee for the Wenatchee Valley Regional Decap Facility.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. It passes unanimously. And now we've got a discussion on the manufactured home code, Maggie.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I'm bringing this before the council tonight, uh. We have been talking since last year with the planning commission about updating some of our codes specifically related to. The criteria for manufactured home citing, um, this was brought up, um, as a recommendation in the housing action plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, just trying to see if there are any regulations that are causing unnecessary barriers to the production and citing of, of these type of housing units. Um. Since twenty fifteen, the city has issued one manufactured home permit, um, and so this was just. This was on the docket last year as something for consideration. Um, the planning commission has identified several standards that may create barriers and, um. Have drafted the code that was attached, um, or included in your packet. Um, they also, there was also a lot of discussion about, um, the recommendation of tiny homes to be promoted to residential zones as a tool to accommodate smaller households. And to create that diversity in housing types. Um. I, I'd like to walk just through some of the, those codes, uh, as the planning commission has, uh, drafted. Um, and I did, I don't think, I don't know if Lewis is on, I did ask the building official to join us tonight, he was gonna try to hop on via Zoom to explain kinda some of the. Um, background and, uh, how these are permitted and regulated differently, uh. I just wanted to get some feedback because, uh, initially we're talking just manufactured homes.
Oh, sorry, he's under Alex G.
Okay.
Didn't know it was him.
Oh, this is Lewis.
Okay, so he's, I do have him on, on board here, but I just wanted to walk through, um. Eighteen thirty-six, oh two five currently is our residential dwelling standards. Um, some of the changes that were made were just for consistency with, uh. Some of our definitions where it says like all single family homes, our code actually has it defined as single family dwellings. So I mean, some minor changes in the very beginning there and then, um. Kind of identifying what related types of construction are, so example would be residential garages and accessory structures would be. Uh. Held to these kind of standards, um. In letter A, it's just adding unit to the language there. And then they're kind of breaking up on D and E, uh. They both kinda talked about foundations and so we just wanted, wanted to say the dwelling unit needs to meet all our seismic snow and wind loading standards. And the others talked about being permanently connected foundations, meeting the IRC standards. Um. The other sections we took out and put them specifically under the manufactured home standards. Um. The planning commission. Uh, likes the idea of. Keeping that requirement with the manufactured home to be a new manufactured home as defined, so that's. New bought off a lot, not previously titled, so not more than. So not more than three years old, it's been sitting on the lot, so it hasn't ever been sold to anyone separately, so a first time purchase and not older than three years off the lot. If that makes sense, so that's how it's defined in the R C W and we've identified that, there was a code. We were also requiring them to meet the definition of designated, which had specific design standards, um. And it required it to be a ma- a certain width and size and they, the planning commission thought that could be a potential barrier. If we made them meet all those requirements of designated manufactured home with how far we've come with, you know, tiny homes or different kind of. Smaller manufactured type housing, and so by eliminating that, um, it might reduce a barrier. Um, but we'd still require them to be new, um, they still are required to meet all our seismic. So our wind, our wind and snow loads and, and all the same criteria as a home, they also are required to meet our W O E code too. So, uh, there still are a lot of regulations in place, um, but that was just one that they thought could eliminate a potential barrier. Uh, so I'd like some feedback on that, um, and I could pull up some definite additional definitions, I realize I didn't. Uh, so I'd like some feedback on that. Um, and I could pull up some definite additional definitions. I realize I didn't include those and that might have been helpful. Uh, they uh sorry. Um, there was a section that talked about the space from the bottom of the home to the ground should be posed by concrete or concrete product which will be load bearing. Um, that was just kind of redundant. So adding this language that says they just need to be permanently connected um to a permanent foundation as specified by the manufacturer. Uh, it's just simpler because uh the manufacturer specifications are what guide us in um the installation of of these type of structures. Um, and I I won't get too into the weeds with uh building code because that's what I have Lewis here for. Um. They uh, okay, there's where I forgot designated uh. Okay, then they they decided they they wanted to, they suggested adding this section on tiny home dwelling standards. Um. So it refers up to um section D in the two above sections, which I know I have a full kind of jot around here, but if if we were to allow tiny homes, they would still need to meet all the IRC stand or all the uh seismic snow and wind loading standards for the city of Leavenworth. They'd also have to have disturbing materials that resemble to full residential foundation. Uh, the additional standards that we would require would be that they be permitted in accordance with the IRC Department of Labor and Industries um as required for tiny homes. And that also um, the letter C was added to address, we have a definition for tiny home park and we have it in our district use chart as something that requires conditional use permit, but it has no criteria. Um, and so this was just added where if it's a tiny home dwelling located within a tiny home park, then it's going to be regulated under the manufactured home park criteria um until such time as we create a separate code. Uh, I think the intent was to eventually have a code for tiny home parks, but we just don't pick up standards. So rather this was, that was more of a polarity at the um direction now of legal. Um, I do have Lewis on board just to kind of answer questions about tiny home. Those kind of standards, because I think it might help um in understanding, but I also would like some feedback on if this is just something you don't even want to consider. Um. Lewis, did you want me to share kind of that regulatory requirements and where it fits under the IRC versus the um the L and I for HUD?
Yeah, um. Um, without taking too much time, that would be a good idea just to explain the differences. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, you you know, because it could get very, very confusing uh with manufactured homes, tiny homes and the IRC. Um, you know, when we think about tiny homes, um, we visualize, you know, this structure on a trailer. Um, so if that's the case, then if it's on wheels, then L and I would have jurisdiction on there and not the IRC. Um, the city would get jurisdiction on it, well, the building department once it is set in place uh on a permanent foundation. So I think it'd be good to share that and just to clarify that. Um. But like Maggie said, not really getting into the weeds, you know, because oh, I think I lost you guys. Oh, there you are.
Sorry, I was trying to share a screen. So what Lewis was talking about is like tiny home on wheels versus a tiny home on a foundation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. So this is what people think of. Uh, and what I was gonna scroll to just for him to explain, because I think that it was help, it was helpful for me because I get kind of into the weeds and uh, he helped me kind of understand this a little bit better. But what was you wanna explain this kind of? Regular.
Sure. So um, you know, we're we're not the only community that was struggling with this. Um, so the ICC with the International Code Council, you know, they've really been working on the tiny home code. Um, and this is a a a floor, a floor flow chart, I'm sorry, that they put together um just to help, you know, communities out there to figure out whether it's a you know, a a tiny home or is it a park model or is it, you know, just a structure on a trailer. So, you know, it's just by following the flow chart, you can see on the first one where it says, uh, is it on wheels? And in a permanent chassis, you just follow that, you know, if it's not, then it goes straight to the IRC, which you know, that that's the typical ADU unit that we see in the city, you know, and that just would have to meet the requirements of the um international residential codes. But if it is on a on a trailer or you know, um, is it gonna be used permanently or it's just a recreational vehicle? So if it's a recreational vehicle, then you know, it goes straight to the NFPA eleven ninety two, which is the uh, the standard that they have to meet for, you know, for an RV, say. Um, but if it's gonna be used as a permanent fixture, just like the one that we just saw right now, that's on wheels, then it you'll shoot straight down. And if it's over three hundred and twenty square feet or, you know, there's the width sides, um. A manufacturer home has to meet a certain um dimensions, so it could be HUD, so it could meet the HUD standards. And if it's over that a hundred, the three hundred and twenty square feet, then they would have to look to see if they can get HUD um approval. And once they have that approval, then you know, once it hits a a permanent foundation, then we take over as the jurisdiction to have um to comply with the IRC. But if it doesn't, then you can see how it drops down that it has to meet our requirements, which is the snow loads, um, the WUI and all, and and you know, all the other design criterias that the Leavenworth has. Um. So this is very helpful for um citizens that are thinking about bringing in a tiny home into the city limits. You know, they could just follow that. Uh, it'll answer a lot of their questions. It'll kind of guide them through it. Um, if not, you know, they get all those colors and kind of we we could guide them through that as well.
Um. And just to clarify, if it's temporary seasonal, it's an RV and we don't allow that as a permanent property. So that wouldn't be allowed to be used as a home or an ADU. You would have to meet, you know.
Correct.
With the by IRC.
Right, because it's temporary. We have no jurisdiction on it. So you know, that's where they would have to go through a different agency, the NFPA eleven ninety two. Um, which that goes, you know, that that's L and I, L and I looks at all those um structures that come in like RVs or any, anything that's on wheels, you know, on a trailer, that would be L and I. It takes care of that. Hopefully that kind of clarifies it a little bit better or a little more.
He's here to answer questions. I was confused for a while.
What's our maximum size? Or how big, how big can it be?
Four hundred square feet.
Yeah, after four hundred square feet, um, you know, you're just a regular dwelling. It wouldn't be considered a lot. So uh, the ICC, they they picked that number four hundred square feet. Um, and that's not including the loft area, like, you know, sleeping loft, which are usually, you gotta crawl into them. Um, so you're allowed to have that. Um, once you pass that four hundred square feet, then you have to have a regular, you can, it'll include the loft, in other words. You know, you have to meet those requirements of the egress and height requirements.
And we're considering allowing these on throughout the city, like single uh all like single family residents, all that kind of thing?
Right.
Right?
Like a, like a manufacturer home, treating them as allow in the same areas that manufacturing would be allowed.
Are we considering a density limit on how many are, like, what are we considering?
Yeah, we still have to have to meet what the underlying zoning allows. So if you had a a primary house, you could, this one of these could be your ADU. Um, when the code changes to allow to AD, you could have up to um, assuming your lot can meet the requirements, your lot coverage and setbacks and all that as well.
Yeah.
Right.
So again, this was just something that the planning commission had identified as an option to to add as a another type of housing. And so um I'd be interested to just get um input um before I move it forward to to the council uh that can make some changes now.
I noticed the word garage was mentioned in this, Maggie.
Oh, yeah. So that was for, let me uh, that was just for clarification because it talked about other related types of construction, the way we've applied those residential dwelling standards. Because there are sections, if you look at letter C, it says attached or detached garages. Should be constructed with siding materials which are the same or similar to those of the primary structure. That's just already in the code. We were just trying to define what uh about what other related types of construction was.
I guess I was thinking, does this, putting a tiny home, you also have to have a parking spot for?
Yes. It, so it would have to, yeah. So the tiny home would just be, it's kind of the type of structure, but it's treated like a ADU or primary dwelling, even if you had, I guess, a really
Okay, but it's not. There is gonna allow on that lot adequate room for a park.
Right. It's still considered a dwelling unit.
Okay.
So it would have to still meet water sewer. It would still have to um meet the standards for water sewer connections. You can't just have like an RV hookup in your yard. And so if this was a primary dwelling, they'd have uh permanent water sewer connection to it. If uh, or an ADU, since it's under nine hundred square feet, it could uh tie into the the uh
Primary residence?
Yeah.
Same thing for this, tie into the primary residence?
Yeah.
And that's if it's used as an ADU, but a lot of places these are used in parks.
Right. So this would, if it wanted to be used, not in a park. This, it would have to be these additional standards. So uh
But otherwise, you do see tiny home parks where they're, you know, like instead of a mobile home park, it would be a tiny home park.
And so that's where that clarification was added, just since we we have the term tiny home park identified in our code. Um, it's defined and it's in our district use chart, but we don't have any standards for conditional use permit. We tied it to a mobile home, manufactured home park. Um, at this point in time. It would be a good thing to address if we allow it in our district use chart with a conditional use permit. How we want that to look and where do we want to um permit that?
So just to get this straight, you could put up to two of these tiny homes on a, on a, next to a primary house? If you got the lot covered. Right, I mean.
We, we would be treating them the same as a stick built tiny, you know, four hundred square foot house.
Or or a ADU, yeah, right, right.
It's just a different type of construction.
Right.
But uh.
Well, you you still gotta meet, you know, the zoning setbacks and all that.
Right, right. Okay.
Can't just pack them in in your backyard and also you're allowed to have
Yeah, so I was just gonna, I was just gonna clarify to you, and under the current code, we only allow one ADU right now.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that idea in conversation with the planning commission, their idea was just, you know, these are, it it could be something that's more cost effective for someone to purchase um versus to build and um, they are so small and compact that they're great for an infill option. If you already have a small lot and you're dealing with lot coverage and setbacks, you could actually potentially a unit of this size on your property.
We have already had a discussion with a hotel owner that would look at this as a way to provide, again, some workforce housing for their workforce. So would be a tiny home a lot of.
Yeah.
So again, it's, it's just a smaller version of your cottage one that you passed. I mean, they're, you know, they're just, we're just shrinking them down a little even more, but.
I think it's a good idea.
Would this be considered like a unit plot subdivision? If you, if you want to?
I
Would that be allowable? I mean, it's an ADU, you could take it, ADU it that way, so.
I mean, if it's a permanent, so I mean, i- if it's on permanent foundation, it's a permanent structure. I mean, our code allows for, you know, lots of division.
Right.
But I mean, it is held to those
Right.
Specific.
But it would fall in this, I don't know why it would fall.
I don't know that somebody would want to do that.
Right. People wants, somebody wants a tiny home to own. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, but you're held to that exact dimension and size. So if you ever moved it, you're kind of stuck.
It's just per, it doesn't get moved.
Right, no, it is permanent. Just to consider, I just am looking for feedback and that's why I I didn't have time on it. Uh, under the study session, so I threw it on there as a discussion item.
So.
I was kind of wondering about that.
So you know, um, I, I do want to say that, um, there, I I did actually did a um, an inspection on a tiny home not too long ago there in the city limits, which was very impressive the way they they had it in their backyard. It was their ADU, but they had a tiny, the the tiny home, you know, mindset.
Yeah, I guess it wasn't on a chassis like a true, like we're typically used to seeing, but it was like three hundred and some square feet. It's a small ADU that was built in town in twenty eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah, and and it's really awesome. I mean, the way it's laid out, it's just perfect. Like wish that the way my house was. You really don't have to go very far to do your task, so.
Well, and I think we're, I mean, just looking at options, again, if you, our housing action plan had identified like seventy some percent of whoever the inventory were like one to two person uh homes. So there are a lot of single and couples living in town that didn't need a lot of space, but uh where a how a three bedroom home might not be what they're looking for.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm looking for something smaller. Maybe they just want to live in the area. It's it's just, again, an option. Um. But uh again, it's not perfect. There's things that I could work through. Um. Or if if as a group, you're just like, absolutely not. Uh, I just would like that direction before I bring it to you as like an action item or a hearing.
I'm a fan.
Yeah.
Me too.
I think it's about time code came around to allow alternative, you know, approaches to housing. We don't all have the same desires. It's really great that we're addressing that. Yeah, I mean, I don't need a three bedroom house, but I mean, this would what's that would have gotten, yeah.
Okay, so overall, if I bring this back to you.
They won't throw you out. Yeah.
Well, if you have feedback for me at any point.
Thanks, Maggie.
Know where to find me. Thank you, Maggie.
Thanks, Maggie. Thanks, Lewis.
Yep.
Thanks, Lewis.
Thank you.
Alex is it?
Yeah, Alex. Thanks, Alex.
That's, that's my other, my other um job. Um, I gotta, I gotta go tuck in kids now. They're all over me.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, guys.
All right, council report, Sharon.
Shortest, but they'll say it to us over. Okay, uh, February this, I attended the planning commission meeting led by Maggie Bowles. Um, it's really amazing to watch those guys and how they're, you know, they're just like YouTube there, but you've got the whole group here. And um, I really enjoyed the meetings. Um, in um February sixth, I attended Our Valley, Our Future, um, Our Housing Valley presentation. I have to say, I was really impressed with it and I was never bored at any time through it. And I think it was like five hours. And um um, uh, I'll let me see. One of the things that really impressed me was um, they were talking about caring for the residents who already live in the communities. Taking, like, taking away the neighborhood feel. They talked about limiting heights, not blocking the neighbor's view. Don't build and block out the sun on your neighbor's garden. Respect what is there and try to see what they see. Be creative. Let the current homeowner know that you are considering them as we allow development and go a long ways. Um, I love the planning and caring and, you know, I I've never heard that, them talking about caring about the people who already live there. It just feels like things are just being jammed around and nobody has any say on anything. So I thought that was a nice thought and I think it would go a long way for um and I don't know, putting that might be too strong, but um anyway, and um I also am concerned about things I read um where people in Seattle and everything over the cross with so many crazy people out of, out there now. And um so I've got concerns for the gentleman who The gentleman who, um, has stepped forward, you know, to kind of be the spokesperson, and saw some really rude and, um. Scary things, so, um, I, that's kind of one of the reasons that. I'm wanting to stay out of the fracas and, um, let the county do what they should be doing. Yep, thanks for listening.
No, it worked, my committee meetings are in the second half of the month.
So I attended the, uh, April sixth that I attended there. April? It was February. February sixth, I attended that same summit, it was a powerful, uh, seminar. Um, they had some excellent, uh, presentations. Um, I was really impressed with, uh. Simplicity Hayden Homes, which are building all over the Northwest, and whose focus is, uh. Hundred to a hundred twenty percent AMI, so they were. They're really working to connect with those kind of folks and make those things happen in communities, they've done. Um, they're worth checking out, um. And also, it was interesting that the Shalan Community Develop. I didn't know that Shalan was able to pull off inclusionary zoning.
Yeah, through a special development.
Cuz it was, right, they did it before, right.
So they had the space and the, and acreage, and, uh, it's still being worked out, but, uh, either they're gonna get. Those, those units built, or they're gonna get several million dollars, it just in fees, so. I was glad to see that it happened somewhere. That's my report.
Uh, my report's pretty short, uh, last week I attended the community engagement night, uh. And helped man a booth for the Upper Valley Aquatic Boosters, uh, organization. The, uh, Anne Murray, one of the members, she, uh, created a little game for, for kids, um, that like these little bubbles and. Underneath the bubbles, they had U D A B, and, um, they had two, two letters on, you know. Either the bubbles, and if you matched the letters together, you'd win like a prize, and it was like a game for kids, and I thought it was kind of cool, and. Um, she also created a electronic business card that has, uh, all the links to their social media sites, and. Uh, we, uh, sent those out, you know, at the, at the booth, and, uh. We also collected about a dozen, dozen additional names to add to the mailing list. That's in my report.
Great. Mike, uh, I was out of town most of the last couple weeks, but, uh, today I went toured the water system with, uh. Supervisor Chris, and I forget kid's title. Interpretation CFP manager, and it was fantastic, it's always great to learn more about how things work around here, and, uh, it's fun to. See how things are going really well, for the most part, I, I've been a firm believer that our water's top-notch around here, and I, I still am, so. And also, there's things that need work, so it's just fun to, fun to, you know. That's all I have for the report.
Okay, well, um, next week I'll be. Over in Olympia again, um, visiting on during this very active session, and we've got, um. Blake over there working hard for a number of things, we've added beyond the housing, we've got him working on the transportation grant. Um, to, to get our road punched through, um. To, uh, from the Chumpstick through to Titus, um, and also for. The Osborne, um, site, uh, putting in a, another capital, uh. Project, um, that'll be submitted, and then another one that's added is. Trying to get some money from, uh, to. Put into play our bear-wise, um. For the containers and all, and get a, a grant to get us started down that path, so that's another one that we're working on besides. All the housing ones, um. This Thursday, I'll be presenting to the Icicle Work Group, um, what you guys all did for conservation pricing for our, uh. Water, um, as you know, we got our meters, um. From them, a big grant from them to put in those new meters, and with that, um, wanted us to look at. Doing conservation pricing with ours, so I'll be giving them that updated report and showing them what we've done to. To, uh, try to get people to conserve, so that's coming up Thursday, um, yeah, and that's all. And so be.
Thanks, Mayor, Council, um, got some staffing updates for you today. Uh, Executive Assistant Sue Craigan has been hired into a new role with the city, she is now, um. Starting March one, going to be our contracting grant coordinator, and she'll be reporting to Andy, she'll be in the Public Works Department and a member of the union. And this job reflects what reflects more, it, it more closely reflects the work that she's been doing for the city over the last few years. Um, and so we were posting a backfill for, uh, her executive assistant position tomorrow. Uh, we currently have two parking enforcement officer positions open, these are new hires. Um, and within public works, we still have a, uh, we have a water treatment plant operator position. Uh, city engineer and, um, mechanic. And voice water treatment plant supervisor positions are all open right now, and some of them, we have applications for and we're moving forward with. Um, with, with interviews, uh, single. See, communication tonight, someone covered that, I don't know if you saw that, that blonde dog, I just couldn't get enough of her.
So cute.
Could not convince.
And she was so chill.
Could not convince Christine to come down to the fest hall to look at her, cuz she said, I know we would have left.
I almost slept with that dog.
That dog was so sweet, I'm sure she's already. Been adopted out, um, and forwarded me today an email from Matt Fields, um, most of you are familiar with him, uh. City resident, uh, retired, uh, Shalan County Sheriff's Deputy, and he was reaching out with concern about the Leavenworth area. Community's wildfire protection plan, he was looking for it on our website, didn't find it, it's there now on our Firewise page. Um, and also wanted to understand the process for updating it, so I forwarded that along to. Shalan County Fire Three and Shalan County Emergency Management, and to inquire about an update process, it was developed in two thousand and five after. The Rat Creek and Hattery Creek fires of ninety-four, um, last updated in two thousand and seventeen, so I just wanna make sure that this plan, um. Can be updated and, and asking them how we should go about that process, and whether we should use the April ninth, uh, workshop that we've already. Arranged as, as part of that update process, or if it's better to just talk to folks about. What they can do themselves to be prepared for wildfires. So I'm gonna take that, um, from the experts, that is my.
So, are there, are there any applications for a city engineer as of yet?
No.
None.
Matt is who I was thinking about with the, um, balconies.
He'll, he'll get under. It just looks like he did.
Seven and a half. Let's see, I will be out next week, council, so, uh, my kids and family kids are coming, spending a whole week with me. A little torn, I'm, that's a good thing they're about. Should be fantastic. I also attended the engagement night, and I went to take home the rottweiler. I already have two, so I, I did not. Um, feedback from the booth I had, which was about utilinics. Pretty good, pretty good in general, most people understand and were okay. My favorite customers were the ones that said, I'm in the U T K. I did have a few sit downs, uh, with some folks who were, you know, challenged with it, but. We worked through it pretty well, and I did forward you an email today, just wanted to give you that background in case you are approached, so that you're understanding. Both sides of the story, but Andy and I will. Continue to try to help as best we can.
Quickly, uh, go through a few things, so I was at community engagement night as well, I had a booth, um, talking about a potential U G A S. I got some good feedback from the community, there were three options we were looking at. Um, A H B L, our consultant, um, just finalized the memo for that, and I'm sending it over to Shalan County to see what kind of feedback I get there. Um, cuz it could.
Do you think they'll actually even respond?
I'm gonna try my best, um, so we'll see where that goes.
They don't have a good track record.
And then I will bring that to, to the council and the planning commission to, to geek out as well, of when we get a little bit more direction from. Where the county might go, um, we had three interviews with consulting firms last week for, um. To take the lead on the twenty twenty-six conference of plan update, and we made our selection today. Uh, and that was, uh, B H C Consulting and working with Partite, um. They were excited to be working with them, and there will be a contract coming soon, hopefully by the next meeting for you to, to sign. Um, I did also attend our Valley, Our Future Housing Summit and was really impressed, there was a really great representation of community and. Uh, city council, uh, it was pretty cool, and, uh, a lot of good ideas out there. For addressing housing, um, I'm continuing to work with Mend on a property that they are working on building a duplex on. Uh, and they are working with, um, paid homes, so that's pretty cool. Um, I am also taking a training on learning to people better together, um, it's like a. Yeah, inclusion and diversity training, which is really cool. Uh, and that will go on for nine weeks, I'm excited about that, cuz I think that will help with the comprehensive plan update, and to be mindful of that. Um, I don't think I have anything else for you. Thanks for listening.
Andy.
All right, so I'll be covering all my staffing updates, one thing I did wanna be explicit about, so. Tell me mention, this is similar to a lot of the work Susan's doing, but, uh, we actually went through a full formal application process. And interviewed multiple candidates, so Sue was selected as the most important, so. That is how she is moving to A. Um, I was also at the engagement night, I had the Icicle Road Transmission Main and Front Street Pedestrian Plaza, just like an introductory, introduction. To that project, um, but I received really good feedback, I think. I don't think I had anything negative, actually, was, was kind of shocking, I was almost thrown off, like, is there? Is there something wrong today? Why is everyone being so nice, but, uh, yeah, really, really positive feedback from that. I'll quick, new project updates for you, both Icicle Road Transmission Main and the pool filter replacement project. They're out for contractors to bid on right now. Um, and then a couple operations updates, just for you to be aware of. With the cold weather, we are having twenty-three frozen meters, I think maybe we had five or six so far. And, and I guess back, you know. Is that true? There, there are at least frozen service lines that are either on the customer side or at the meter, I can't necessarily say they've all been metered, now that I've seen that. Um, but five or six that have frozen. And we had Cara push out messaging, but it is a reminder, it's the property owner's responsibility to be sure that their line is freeze. Which is just done by running a little bit of water, uh. The one interesting thing, I think there's quite a bit of misinformation for people, or people are not understanding what the consumption base rates look like. And what that actually means for their bill, so one thing that we've received is people saying. Hey, I'm not running water because you're not going to charge me for running water. And as a reminder right now, like, if someone's running a small stream, we say like a pencil stream, pencil-led stream of water. It's going to be less than a dollar a month, and it's a lot cheaper than having a full refrigerated system, so. Just thought I'd share that with you as well. Um, and then the last item, I know I mentioned at the last council meeting that we were closing the Wilkman, uh, restroom due to. Little stain in there and some needles that we found, we're planning to reopen that at the end of this week, and. Hopefully, we broke the cycle and just see what happens.
Andy, the, uh, the meters freeze because the water freezes, is that what's going on?
Yeah, cuz there's no movement of water for lots of, if no one is running water, and it's happening primarily in houses that people aren't today.
Yeah, second homes.
Second homes? Yeah.
Some are second homes, some is someone who's temporarily out there, like, there's, there's a few scenarios. There was someone who was home and just hadn't used any water. Apparently, long.
They do that.
We don't want them visiting, we don't want them visiting.
They're not showering, they're not.
All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Unanimous.